The June 10, 2025 School Board Regular Meeting is called to order. Thanks to all of you who are attending in person, quite a few of you, as well as those who are joining us on the RCPS YouTube channel. We'll move on to the agenda. Is there a motion and a second to approve the agenda as amended? The agenda was amended to move a recognition to a future board meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Watkins, second by Ms. Apel. Is there any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, very good. Our thoughts and prayers are with the family and friends of Carolyn Bowley, a former music teacher with RCPS on her passing. Our thoughts and prayers are with the family and friends of Brian J. Wischnaff, former school board member who served RCPS School Board from 1996 to 2002. Also with the family and friends of Margaret Ann Brown, a former teacher and guidance counselor with RCPS on her passing. Please join me in a moment of silence. Please rise and join me in a pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, it's time for an exciting part of all of our meetings, which are recognitions. And before we get started with the recognitions, I would like to request...oh, I'm out of order. Forgive me. Apparently, I should have asked Mrs. Treskey to please call the roll so we can officially begin.
Mrs. Apel.
Present.
Mr. Cherry. Mr. Link. Ms. Quintana.
Here.
Ms. Trigg.
Here.
Mrs. Watkins.
Here.
Dr. Jamison.
Here. Thank you very much, my apologies. Now, really and truly, it's time for our favorite part, for recognitions. Before we get started, we'd like to remind you, if you're here for a recognition, please go see Ms. Mittel after you have been recognized in the lobby, because we'd like to have your picture taken. So let's move on. Ms. Yatkinson, if you will come forward and tell us about the first recognitions this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Jamison, school board members, and Superintendent Dr. White. I'm excited to be here to recognize our spring student athletes. We had many district award winners, but we would like to recognize tonight our region and state first-team members and champions. At this time, I would like to invite Paul Kelly, coach of the Patrick Henry Girls Tennis Team, to join me at the podium. The girls tennis team had a great season this year. First up is Anna Marie Reincon. Anna Marie is the Region 5C Regional Singles Champion for the third time. Next up is Katherine Reincon. Katherine teamed up with her sister Anna Marie to win the 5C Doubles Championship. They will both compete at the state meet later this week. Congratulations and good luck.
All right, I have many things. Anna Marie and Katherine. Yes, thank you very much. Thank you very much. Oh, thank you. I was reading and not looking up. Good luck.
Good luck.
I would like to invite Coach Drakeford and Coach Benia to join me, please. Coach Drakeford and Coach Benia are the coaches for the girls track team. And I would like to recognize our individual regional girls champions. First up, Kiki Grubb. She is the regional champion in the 100-meter hurdles, the 300-meter hurdles, and she competed last weekend at the state meet and placed second in the 300 hurdles. Next up is Niv Murphy. Niv is the regional champion in the 3200 meters. Runners and their teammates who are here, Bryn Oygaard and Brianna Adams, were the girls outdoor track team 5C Regional Champions. Congratulations to the girls track team on a great season. Bryn and Brianna, come on up. This last one was on short notice, because, and I don't believe Mr. Vineyard was able to get here, but I'm hoping that Christiana Lewis, if you're here, please step forward. Christiana Lewis, who this year is the 200-meter state champion. Time if Coach Dowdy and Coach Mills could come join me. I'd like to congratulate Sam Dowdy. Sam Dowdy was selected the male recipient of the Bene Brith Award for Excellence in Athletics, Academic, and Scholarship. Sam played football, golf, and soccer for PH. Sam has committed to play soccer for VMI. I'd like to congratulate Grace Williams, who was unable to attend today, on being presented with the 2025 Art 11 Personal Life Award for Outstanding Citizenship. Grace played volleyball and soccer for Patrick Henry. Grace will be attending Virginia Tech in the fall. She was unable to attend tonight. Congratulations to all our student athletes for their great year and bringing pride to Roanoke City Schools. Both high schools had performed well in their difficult region and state events. We are very proud of them, the coaches and parents, who have given so much of their time and energy with our programs. I would also like to take this moment to thank the school board for supporting our athletic programs. Our teams could not be successful without everyone's support. Thank you so much.
All right. We are on to our next recognition. Ms. Jennifer Bailey, can you please come forward and tell us about this year's walking challenge?
Good evening, Dr. Jamison, Mrs. Apel, members of the board, and Dr. White. Thank you so much for having us today, or tonight. At RCPS, we believe that a healthy team is a strong team. That is why we are committed to supporting walking challenges and health initiatives such as the Spring Walking Challenge. Your health matters, and we are proud to walk alongside you every step of the way. This year's challenge showcased the power of teamwork, determination, and our collective commitment to wellness. Tonight, we are going to celebrate two groups of winners. The first group is the top three teams by average steps. First place champion is Grandin Court, and Grandin Court is represented by Katherine Bell. Congratulations to the second place winners, which is Forest Park, represented by the Okay, and a shout out to Garden City for third place, represented by Thomas Matko. Okay, and the next group is the top three teams. You may want to stay up here for just a second. The next group is the top three teams by total steps and miles. And taking the crown for first place is Garden City, represented by Thomas Matko. I just also want to give a shout out to Mr. Matko. He also came in second place in the entire division for RCPS. Pretty awesome. Thank you. Coming in strong for second place is Monterey, represented by Principal Struthers. All right, and our third place winners for this building, the WBR Building, AOD, and the Juvenile Detention Center, is represented by Mrs. Victoria Thornton. And thank you for celebrating all of our winners tonight.
Next, we are moving on to our next recognition this evening. Ms. Kathy Duncan, can you please come forward and tell us about our recognition?
Good evening, Chairperson Jamison, members of the school board, Superintendent White, and everybody present in person and online. I'm Kathy Duncan, Director of Career and Technical Education. I'm here on behalf of myself, Bridget Bentley, Eric Lear, and all the RCPS Air Force Junior ROTC cadets, both past and present. It is both an honor and a privilege to recognize an individual whose service, leadership, and impact have truly set a standard of excellence. Tonight, we proudly acknowledge Master Sergeant Terry Mills of Patrick Henry High School and ROTC, and William Fleming Air Force Junior ROTC, as the recipient of the 2025 Air Force Junior ROTC Outstanding Instructor Award. I gotta talk about you a little bit more. This distinguished honor is awarded to instructors who exemplify the very best in leadership, commitment, and student development. Master Sergeant Mills has not only led with integrity and purpose, but he has inspired his cadets to aim higher, both in and out of uniform. Through his tireless dedication to Air Force Junior ROTC program, he has made a profound and lasting impact on his students, his school, and the broader community. With your permission, on behalf of the Roanoke City School Board, we acknowledge our sincere congratulations to Master Sergeant Mills on this well-earned recognition. Your work has shaped lives, uplifted young leaders, and strengthened the values we all hold dear.
Very good. I'm just taking a minute to look at all the Dowdies. They were my babies when my son played soccer at PH. So let's move on to the personnel list. Is there a motion and a second to approve the personnel list as presented?
So moved.
By Ms. Quintana?
Second.
Second by Ms. Watkins. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Very good. Personnel list. Is there a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Apel?
Second.
Second by Ms. Watkins. Is there any discussion?
Ms. Trigg.
I'm sorry, thank you, Ms. Trigg. This is what happens when some of our deeper voices are missing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, Mrs. Watkins, would you please tell us about the gifts that have been received by RCPS?
Yes, ma'am. The board accepts with extreme gratitude the following donation. Blue Eagle Credit Union and K-92 Radio Station teamed up and provided a donation in the amount of $1,510.34 to the RCPS McKinney Vento Program. Thank you, thank you, thank you so much for donating. And any of our other community partners that wish to join and support our students and families and staff, please do so. We welcome it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Watkins. All right, we'll move right along now to citizen participation on agenda and non-agenda items. Ms. Apel, do we have folks signed up this evening?
Yes.
Very good.
Yes. All right. The school board values open communication, and we look forward to receiving your comments. We encourage all participants to engage in civil discourse and ask that you keep your comments respectful in helping us achieve this goal. Citizen comments offer and Citizen comments offer an opportunity for the public to inform the board. The board and superintendent generally do not respond to comments made or questions posed. If you would like answers to a question, please present them in writing to the clerks after speaking. Staff present at the board meeting and whenever possible will assist you with your inquiry. Please state your name for the record and state whether you reside in Roanoke City or not. We ask that you keep your comments to three minutes. There is a light at the center of the podium. That light will turn yellow when you have about a minute or 30 seconds left. In order to respect privacy and confidentiality, please refrain from using any student names. And when I call your name, you can come up to the podium. Jordan Coleman.
Jordan Coleman and I reside not in Roanoke City. I'm a Salem citizen, but I am a Roanoke City employee.
Okay, you ready?
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and our fellow community members. My name is Jordan Coleman, an RCPS employee and a proud vice president of the Roanoke Education Association. I am here speaking on behalf of our association and the employees of Roanoke City Public Schools. As you know, the Commonwealth of Virginia has allocated funding specifically for a $1,000 bonus for SOQ staff as reported by the Department of Education. The document states that this includes teachers, school counselors, librarians, instructional aides, principals, and assistant principal positions. Roanoke Education Association was informed in a regular meeting with our superintendent that this was hopefully going to be included with all employees, not just the ones listed above. We were also told that it were perhaps going to be a retention bonus coming later in the summer or early in September. However, we are concerned that waiting until that late may exclude some very important members of our RCPS community, including those that are retiring in the 24-25 school year. It is also critical that these funds reach employees in a timely manner. Many staff members were informed shortly, kind of shortly noticed, of summer school positions being limited, and several teachers and instructional aides who had banked on having that for the summer were so sadly mistaken to have budgeted for something that did not come due to program changes and funding changes. A timely distribution of state-funded bonus would help ease that financial burden and help some of our employees feel more valued and respected from our organization, especially when the unexpected change of summer school impacted their livelihoods. Other localities near Roanoke City have planned to do the following. In Bodataut, the Board of Supervisors agreed to make sure that the $1,000 bonus went to all full-time employees and that 500 would go to part-time employees by the end of this month. In Franklin County, that locality has been asked to contribute funds to make sure the bonus is 1,000, and that educators should expect that in their June check. Roanoke County is following a similar suit as Franklin. In Salem, every educator will receive a $1,000 bonus before or after taxes, and part-time employees will receive 500. I urge the board and district leadership to prioritize the rapid allocation of these funds, and let's honor the intent of the state funding and the commitment to those who continue to serve our most valuable resource, our students. Thank you.
My name is Jill King. I am a resident of Roanoke City, and I am a teacher at Roanoke Academy. I am here tonight on behalf of many dedicated staff members who are concerned about the decision to withhold the state-sponsored bonus and shift it instead to a retention bonus for next school year. This change has real consequences for real people, educators, support staff, and others who have carried out the work required for this bonus during the current school year. Many of us budgeted with the understanding that the bonus would arrive at the end of this school year, as it will for most other local districts. With summer school funding being cut and fewer summer positions available, this bonus is not a luxury. It's a lifeline to make it through the summer months. By converting this earned bonus into a retention incentive, the district is changing the terms set by the state budget in line 44A, which states that the bonus should be given in June of 2025 to all teachers, guidance counselors, librarians, instructional aides, principals, and assistant principals. It feels not just unfair, it feels like a breach of trust. Those who are retiring or moving on will not see a dollar of the bonus that they earned. And for those continuing, the message being sent is that our loyalty is being leveraged against money that we have already worked for. We understand the financial challenges the district is facing, but balancing the budget on the backs of your workforce, especially during a time of rising costs and reduced opportunities for extra income, is not the solution. This bonus was not just a carrot for next year. It was part of our compensation for this year's hard work. I urge you to reconsider this decision. Honor the original intent of the bonus and the commitment we've shown throughout the school year. Provide the payment now when it is needed the most. Let's retain our educators not with delayed compensation, but with trust, fairness, and respect. Thank you.
Dr. Jamison, school board, Dr. White. I speak what everybody before me has spoken as well. I am here on behalf of the REA as well as the employees of Roanoke City. I'm a resident for 30 years, an RCPS employee for 25, and if we want to retain people, we need to treat them for what they've done. We need to not hold on to their money and hold it off until September. In March, the discussion started for the bonus, which excited everyone. We asked in April about the bonus, and we were told we have to wait. We have to see what the budget will allow. That's fine. In April, we asked again, we have to wait for the numbers to come in. And I understand that government money cannot be counted on, just like the government can't always be counted on. But this was money that was expected to be on our checks in June. This was money to help people get through the summer. This was money when positions got cut that a lot of people said, "Well, at least I've got the bonus coming, so I'll be okay." And then to find out that now it's coming the end of September, when several of my friends, bless their hearts, have retired, I'm a little jealous, but they won't see that money because they're gone. I have a few friends who've changed professions and have gone on other ways. They could have used that money this summer while they're looking for something else. We're asking just for reconsideration to please consider using this money not as a retention bonus, but as a acceptance to say thank you for a job well done, a job that's already been done in 24-25, and pass that money on to folks who can use it now. So thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Are you ready?
Yes. Good evening, Chair Jamison, Dr. White, members of the school board and administration. My name is George Dickinson. I'm a Roanoke City resident, a parent of two Roanoke City students, as well as a teacher in Roanoke City Schools. I wanted to speak as someone that is concerned about teacher retention in the city and the decisions being made about it. As early as March this year, teachers became aware of the possibility that they could expect up to a $1,000 bonus at the end of the year. When this went from rumor to fact, it was very exciting, particularly when considering the drastic downsizing in staff for summer school as we transitioned from RCPS Plus to the STAR program. For many staff, this bonus would be a lifeline, giving them the ability to make ends meet until another means of employment for the summer is found. The rather surprising discovery that RCPS planned to give this bonus later rather than in June came as a shock to many educators, and the news that surrounding districts would be giving these funds by the end of June, with Salem even putting up extra funds so that the educators could expect the full $1,000 after taxes, was a little disheartening. The withholding of this bonus to be used as a retention bonus in September, when funds will be less necessary for educators, rather than getting it by the end of June, when funds will help educators get through the summer, is unlikely to make employees feel loyal to RCPS. Instead, it will likely make them frustrated and envious of other districts who made a different decision. At a time when teacher retention is so important, this will likely have the opposite effect for our district. If retention of the staff is the goal, there are many steps RCPS could take. One step would be to vote for keeping the insurance the same. Raising of insurance creates an unaffordability for educators, and this affordability is an important factor in choosing a place of employee. This feels an awful lot like passing the buck to the teachers. Transparency is key in the retention of staff, so it is important to let the staff know of these decisions and upcoming decisions so that they can be discussed and that we can come to meetings informed. As a current member of the mentors, a group that is espoused with guiding new educators and those new to RCPS, something that I have heard multiple times across multiple schools, is that teachers are leaving due to lack of meaningful discipline to students and because of lack of support from administrators. If we're looking to retain teachers, these could be two areas that we could serious look into, reining in student behavior and providing staff a way to evaluate their administrators would be moves in the correct direction. While we made a smart decision years ago to raise teacher pay above surrounding districts, paying teachers of their salaries certainly is important, but we have to look that other districts are catching up. How can RCPS best support its teachers in order to retain them? How is student discipline impacting teacher retention, and what steps are needed to take to fix it? If schools lose a large percentage of teachers in a year, how do we evaluate why this is happening? Thank you for taking the time to listen.
Thank you. Are you ready?
Yeah. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I am Kaitlin Fisher. I'm a citizen of Roanoke City, as well as a Roanoke City employee for eight years. I was disheartened to hear that our bonuses would be put off for a few more months because I had personally dealt with some, out of the blue situations in the middle of the school year that required me to miss three months of work. And that was to deal with knee surgery, as well as deal with the loss of my mother to Parkinson's. Once I heard that the bonus was gonna happen, it gave me a little bit of light to finish out the school year. And then to find out that, oh, we're gonna wait, that was not, it was a sign to me of a little bit of disrespect for the hard work that we put into these students, especially our special needs students. And I am urging the board to reconsider holding off on the delay and do it when the timing is right. That way, those of us who are continuing with Roanoke City can get what we have worked hard for, as well as for those who have, as others have mentioned, retired or moved on to other avenues. And thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. White, school board members. I am here to take responsibility for telling REA members that Roanoke City Public Schools plans to outsource more educators. Anytime educators are going to be outsourced, REA needs to know it. While there's still not enough information, the budget is about to be passed, and the public deserves to know what is happening. I am not paid by RCPS, but I work for the employees, and I care about them and your students. Over the years, Roanoke City has outsourced transportation, food services, and nursing care. The goal is to save money. That sounds ideal. However, has it been accomplished? Let's review transportation. Last year, buses were late every day by as much as an hour, robbing students of an education as they lost classroom time. RCPS administration lost control through the outsourced company. This year, with a new bus service and staggered start times, the issue appears to have been resolved, but families still lose. Employees with children and all residents are inconvenienced as children's start times are now staggered with parents' start times. Some children from the same families have different start times, making childcare difficult. Sometimes, RCPS can transfer RCPS workers to other buildings to accommodate needs, but many times, they cannot, and that doesn't help families where parents work other jobs. Parents who work for the school system in order to spend quality time with their own families have lost control of their schedules. If RCPS studies how much money they have saved over the years, they will realize that initial savings are no longer. Now, RCPS pays as much or more to an outside company. This year, we have learned that with the outsized cafeteria staff in more than one school, students must serve themselves in the line, sometimes assisted by their teachers. When food service employees do not serve children directly, there's a loss of portion control, which means that it robs students of the needed daily nutrients that they get too much or too little, and increased waste occurs with large portions. We know that Corillian supplied nurses to buildings this year. Turnover in any job is not unusual, but when a contract with the providers in question, then there are several openings, not just a few. And now we learn that there could be outsourced positions in special education, not teachers, as we first learned, but instructional assistants and a position of registered behavior technicians. That'll decrease the number of behavior specialists hired by RCPS. And what's the benefit? Outsourcing hurts the community. It hurts your tax base. It hurts everyone who lives here. Thank you.
A little nervous. My husband's the speaker.
Are you ready?
I am, yes, ma'am.
Okay, here we go.
Good evening. My name is Tarasha Bell. I do work for the city. I am a special education teacher for James Breckenridge. Thank you, Dr. Jamison, and Dr. White, as well as the school board. The concern that I would like to speak about is that many school districts across the country offer their 10-month employees, especially teachers, the option to receive their salaries spread out over 12 months. This allows for consistent income throughout the year, including the summer months when we are not in session. Unfortunately, this is not curling the case in our district, and before it's said that we do have an option through our summer pay account, that's exactly what so many of us are frustrated with. We often hear advice to plan ahead or use the outside summer pay account, but that misses the point. Many of us sign up for teacher positions, not just because we love working with our students, and though we absolutely do, but also because it's been known to provide financial stability during the summer months. That should not come with additional requirements or barriers. Teachers thrive when we are supported, not just during the school year, but year-round. We drifted too far from a system that gives educators the financial and mental breathing room they need during the summer to recharge and return energized for the new year. Supporting teachers in this way isn't just good policy, it is the right thing to do. Over the past four years, I've seen countless educators face financial stress during the summer due to the way funds are distributed by RCPS. Teachers are required to open a separate account with a specific bank, often one they have no prior relationship with, just to access summer pay. In some cases, this process even involves sharing sensitive personal information, such as a social security number, with third-party institution. In my previous district... In my previous district, this was not the case. Teachers could opt into a 12-month pay schedule without opening additional accounts or jumping through extra hoops. Summer income was stable and predictable, coming from the district and not a third-party institution. As a result, summer pay positions were sought out of passion, not desperation. Another major concern is the delay in payments for those who choose to work summer school. Teachers often go a full month before receiving a paycheck for June's work. That's a significant hardship, especially when so many of us are budgeting carefully to get through the summer months. I am respectfully asking the board to reconsider how compensation is structured for 10-month employees. Specifically, I urge you to offer a 10-month pay option for teachers who wish to have their salary distributed evenly throughout the year, payments being distributed by the district and not a third-party institution. Eliminate the requirement to operate a separate banking account to access summer's funds, and ensure timely payments for summer school positions with July 1 paycheck for work compensated in completed in June. These are not new or radical requests. Many districts have already implemented systems like these. We know it's possible, and we know it makes a difference. Giving teachers financial stability during the summer isn't just a convenience, it's a sign of respect for the work we do all year long. Can I do the last part, please?
Quickly.
I promise it'll be quick. Additionally, to drive my point home, I want to express deep frustration over the recent news that VDOE bonus will not be included in June 15's paycheck. This delay adds only the frustration, the financial stress many of us finance face during the summer, especially disheartening to hear that we cannot receive a payment on July 1, simply because we are considered 10-month employees. Again, this seems more like an old way of doing things that is currently affecting your bottom line. Your reasoning feels out of touch with the realities educators face. Again, review your business practices and consider the benefits of giving educators the financial and mental breathing room they need during the summers to recharge, return energizing for the new school year, and support your teachers in the way that is good policy. Thank you for your consideration.
On behalf of the school board, I want to thank everyone for taking the time to speak to us. As we said earlier, we value the feedback of our community. Public input is important as we make decisions on behalf of all students in Roanoke City Public Schools. Thank you.
All right. Very good. Let's move on to the superintendent updates. Dr. White?
All right. Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the school board, members of the public, in person and online. This evening, we're bringing forward items for your information and consideration, including approval of a capital fund balance amendment, approval of the 2025-2026 budget, approval of the federal entitlement grants for 2025-2026, approval of the revised strategic plan, and an update on what we are calling Operation Nest. Before we get to our agenda, I would like to highlight a few items for the board and for the public's consideration, and for your information as well. So we are excited to welcome our students for summer school and our new STAR program this coming Monday, June 16. Bus routes will be available later this week and will be posted to the transportation page of the RCPS website, which you can access from the quick links in the green banner. It is also not too late to sign up for several of our other summer programs, such as our Staying Safe by Staying Connected camp and our summer program. So be sure to visit our website for more information. Also, the Spring Standards of Learning, or SOL, testing reports are now available on ParentView. So this includes detailed student reports, excuse me, and the Spring Parent Report. So if you need to obtain an activation code for ParentView or need assistance accessing your students' reports, please contact your student's school. Also, the CTE Foundation held the annual CTE Extravaganza at the end of May, and I was proud to be a part of that wonderful event, which featured the presentation of scholarships to six Rotec and six Daytech students, in addition to special awards from the Kiwanis Club and the Roanoke Regional Home Builders Association. So it really was wonderful to have, be a part of that event, and that allowed us to showcase the amazing new CTE classrooms at Daytech, and it raised nearly $35,000 to support students in the future, which is a record amount. So congratulations to them. And thanks again to everyone who came out to this wonderful event, and those who donated and purchased items from the silent auction, and to the sponsors who made the event possible. As a reminder, and as we've previously mentioned, updated cellphone guidelines will go into effect with our summer programs next week, and will continue throughout the 25-26 school year. So students in all grades will not be permitted to use their cellphones from the start of the school day to the end of the school day. I see some applause in there. All right, okay. So this change aligns with Governor Yonkin's Executive Order 33 and recently passed legislation requiring school divisions to implement cellphone restrictions for all grade levels. The updated guidelines will be posted on our website and social media tomorrow. We will continue sharing the information with high school families throughout the summer, and our cellphone workgroup will continue to meet to monitor how everything is going. And finally, as you know, last week, we celebrated the last day of school at our graduating seniors during commencement exercises for both Patrick Henry and William Fleming High Schools. Approximately 900 students walked the stage. I always like to say that the graduation is our Super Bowl. That's our Super Bowl. And so we, again, and I always say that our students are graduating with a diploma and a resume, and so I'm just so, so proud of everyone, all of our staff members, but also our graduates who were able to walk the stage last week. Last year, for reference, we had about 750 students graduate, so this is reflective of intentional effort and intentional focus on increasing our graduation rate and all of the hard work that goes into that. It's also an indication of the larger class that we had graduating, and so as we know from our feasibility study, we will continue to see those growing numbers in the years to come. So again, I want to thank our school board and our city council for joining us at our commencement ceremonies. And again, congratulations to our graduates, as well as congratulations to Mrs. Anderson and Mr. Bowen and their teams for two wonderful commencement ceremonies, as well as their hard work throughout the school year. And that goes for all of our teachers, administrators, and staff across the division who really led and took the charge. Remember from convocation, where we talked about leading with love and literacy, and we could see that throughout the school year. And so, again, hats off to our entire team. It was a great year because of our team's dedication and commitment to our students. So let's take a quick look back at some of what we've accomplished this school year. So hats off to our team for a wonderful school year. Great school year, another one in the books. It's wonderful. So again, to begin our report this evening, we have several budget items on the agenda, and so I want to acknowledge that we do have teachers and staff in attendance tonight, and we suspect to hear about the forthcoming bonus. And I want to thank you all for being here, to, one, to speak up and to advocate and to share your perspectives, to elevate your voice, which I believe is fairly critically important. And so thank you for being here. And, two, to learn more, to hear discussions about what we've been talking about in terms of the budget and being engaged in that process. I just want to thank you for being here for that, and to hear about our strategic plan, too. So, thank you. So I know that we will have a robust discussion about the bonus, and want everyone to know that this will be addressed during the board's ongoing business portion of tonight's meeting. So first, we have a procedural formality that, to ensure alignment with the city's actions on the budget. And so this is an amendment to our current 2024-2025 capital fund. So I'll ask our Chief Financial Officer, Kathleen Jackson, to come forward to provide more information about this amendment for the board's consideration. So, Mrs. Jackson.
Thank you very much, Dr. White. Good evening, Chair Dr. Jameson, Vice Chair Ms. Pell, members of the school board. As Dr. White said, this effort is just to make sure that our budget now aligns with the reappropriation of funds for capital projects that was approved by city council at their May 19 meeting. So we just want to make sure that our budget now aligns exactly with that dollar amount. While we don't anticipate that we will need to spend this entire amount in the current fiscal year, because so many capital projects are multi-year, again, I think it's important for us to just dot our i's and cross our t's and make sure that we have those funds properly approved by you, now that they've been re-appropriated by council. So this is just an amendment to the capital fund portion of our budget to bring that budgeted amount up to the amount that was approved, just over $17.8 million, as you see in the board agenda item. So any questions about that item?
Any questions for Ms. Jackson this evening? Very good, very good. So therefore, is there a motion at a second to approve the change to the 2024-2025 capital fund budget amendment as presented?
So move.
Second by Ms. Trigg. Is there any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Don't go anywhere. So next, we're asking school board members for your approval of the 25-26 fiscal year budget. And again, Ms. Jackson, I'd ask you to present the budget for the board's consideration.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you again. So this is the culmination of a lot of work that I know the board has heard and discussed and pondered quite a bit. So this is the culmination of all of that work, and we can pull just a few slides. I will say, you have a hard copy of the full budget book at your place, and that's been posted online with the agenda as well, and will, presuming of approval, be posted on the outward-facing website as required for the school division. But we are at that point where we are required to have a budget for next year approved before July 1. And so this is the line, excuse me, line item detailed budget. And I just wanted to take a minute to have a visual of the timeline of this budget development, and thank the board for all of your work in addressing this throughout the years. As you can see by the calendar, the blue dots are school board meetings where budget was entertained and discussed and debated, and the green dots are where the budget committee dug in a little deeper as well. So I think that's impressive, frankly, for the board to be that involved and engaged and have so many opportunities, that you engaged in public discussion of the budget and looked at all of the different pieces. So I appreciate your contributions along the way in helping us build this budget for this year. So I'm just going to hit the highlights, because as that last slide showed, this has been discussed to some length at many, many meetings, so I won't belabor that today. But our proposed budget does include a projection of about a 2.4% increase in state revenues, level funding from the locality, and then we're looking at probably about a 2% increase projected for our grant funds from federal grants. We do have a 2.5% average combined scale and step raise for all positions in this budget. We have about 71 new positions. Most of that is taken up by that new, that change to the standards of quality for supporting students who are English learners, so I know we've talked quite a bit about that. We also have some additional positions necessary for supporting students with disabilities, and then just through our enrollment increases and those staffing meetings that happen every year, school by school, looking at those enrollment changes and potential needs there. So that's kind of all combined, what adds up to our anticipated need. But the biggest chunk, of course, being ensuring we're continuing to meet that state requirement. This budget does, as I know at the last meeting, the school board entertained a couple of different options. So we did put back in employee benefits at the current level, so we did not increase the cost to employees on that. So those are some good things that we were able to maintain in the budget. This budget does set aside our elementary Spanish program to enable us to kind of repurpose those positions to help us with filling those English learner-required positions for next year. So this slide just tried to kind of summarize the budget to have it all in one slide, so you can see, again, you have a whole book with all of this information in it. But just over $272.2 million general fund budget. Again, we have an estimate of about a $30 million grant fund budget, but of course, we always request appropriation of the exact dollar amount as those grants come in. Our food service fund budget, just over $13 million. We have a $1 million in our capital fund that's based on what was in our capital improvement plan. That's been approved, but I will note, based on the required reappropriation of funds, I anticipate that once we finish this year and we know where we are with the capital projects, we'll probably have to go forward with a reappropriation request based on whatever's left, wherever we are in those projects, what remains to continue to happen in the subsequent fiscal year. So that'll be a process. As we're closing the books for the current year, we'll bring that back to you and to the council at that time. So lastly, I just take a minute to cover, again, you have a very large book in front of you, and that is posted online, and so just wanted to take a second to sort of explain why that we develop our budget book in accordance with best practice standards that are established by the Association of School Business Officials International. And so the first section of that budget book is the executive summary. It's intended to be kind of just a summary, as it says, that you could look at just that portion and get a general idea of everything that's in that budget book, if you don't have time to look at the whole thing. The next section is the organizational section, so that gives a lot of good context about how we operate and how our budget is developed, and what state regulations and local regulations are at play to govern kind of how we do things, when we do things, that kind of thing. So that provides a lot of good information about policies and procedures and that sort of thing. The financial section, of course, is kind of the meat of the budget, all the dollars and cents, and some explanation of our projection, our projected revenue and use of funds. And then lastly, is an informational section, which just provides some additional kind of supporting information, local tax information, enrollment data, just as an effort to provide the whole picture for anyone who might be using this budget document to kind of get a sense of Roanoke City schools and where our dollars are going. One thing I will mention that has become a staple and highlight of our budget over the last few years is our effort to provide some information in there of how our budget divides out in accordance with our strategic plan. So we ask our budget managers, as they're providing their budget requests, to kind of, you know, tie their needs to what parts of the strategic plan are we working to accomplish with these funds. Because that is also on your agenda for tonight, of course. The revised strategic plan was not available as we were completing this budget, so when you see that section, that is referencing the original strategic plan in place, and so we will certainly update. And so, we will certainly update next year when we're doing the budget and make sure that we're revising how we do that and aligned to the revised strategic plan. So, I just wanted to mention that. And last point, just as I know it's fresh news in terms of Carillion changing their business model and moving away from providing school nursing services. So, of course, that is something that we're still just now at the beginning stages of looking at what that's going to look like going forward. But we do have those funds budgeted for school nurses. So, whether those funds go to pay Carillion or some other medical outsourced company to do those services or whether those funds instead go to start paying salary and benefits for our CPS employees, the funding is in the budget. So, I just wanted to assure you that we might have to change the nature of that expense a little bit. But, you know, we do feel confident that we have the funds budgeted to ensure we can continue those services. So, I think that is all I have to highlight. But I'm certainly happy to take any questions or comments.
Certainly. Are there any comments for Mrs. Jackson at this point this evening?
All I'm going to say is thank you. I know I say it every time, but thank you. You and your team have worked extremely hard. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Yes, I would just echo that thanks. For as many colored boxes that we had conversations up there, you were having many, many more. So, thank you for all your hard work and thanks to your team.
Well, thank you.
I would just echo everything that everyone else said. But I would also say that in the six years that I've had the opportunity to pull this first, to vote on it and pull this first sheet off, this has been the hardest of all the years. And so, this is, this is like our hardest budget that we have to balance at home, right? When you think about, there's a limited amount of money for all the things that we need. Sometimes there are hard choices that have to be made. And we've had the luxury in prior years have enough or more than enough and enough to put away for a rainy day and know that it will be there. And we had to make real hard decisions this time. And I feel sure that going forward, the decisions will be just as hard, if not harder. So, I really just want to say, you know, thank you, just like everybody else did. But I want to acknowledge the fact that this year was the hardest in all of my six years. And I would imagine, Eli, being the most senior person, it has been the hardest for you as well. Is that correct?
Yeah, we, I think we all thought it would be the COVID years. This was much harder.
This was much harder.
This was much harder. So, thank you to your team.
Tammy Manning is a member of my team. She's our budget coordinator. So, I mean, the whole accounting team worked very hard on this, but especially Tammy.
All right. Are there any other comments or questions? And thank you, Ms. Watkins. I think that was well put. Is there a motion and a second to approve the final draft of the 2025-2026 budget?
So moved.
Second. Second by Ms. Trigg. Is there any discussion? I would just tell those who do not know, the very cool innovation they made is that it looks at us like a draft. And as soon as we approve it, we rip the first page off. That's what Ms. Watkins, and then it's final, just like that.
It's newspaper.
It's the best technology. So, hearing, no discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Goes opposed? All right, we have a budget.
No longer a draft. Thank you.
Very good. All right, thank you, Mrs. Jackson. And I would also like to thank the school board. I'd like to thank you for your hard work. Again, we saw that timeline, that calendar, for all the committee meetings, all of the discussions. We know that these have been really hard decisions. And so, I just want to thank you for your support, your advocacy. I want to thank Councilman Hagan for being here in person. So, thank you for being here. And just to all of our budget managers and to Mrs. Jackson's entire team. So, again, much of what has already been said here, just, it's a phenomenal team. It's not happenstance that our finance team wins award after award after award. This, it's, again, it's intentional, it's deliberate, and it's just really based on excellence. So, I just want to say thank you again for all of your hard work. So, are you ready for entitlement grants?
I'm just going to say, I'm not standing here like trying to get appreciation or anything. I do have the next item as well.
So, again, it's time for the entitlement grants for the board's consideration and approval. So, back to you.
Thank you, thank you. So, each year, we do qualify for federal entitlement grants. And there are four areas. And what we are bringing to you today is a request to approve our applications for those funds. As entitlement grants, they're not competitive. So, if we meet the criteria of each of those titles, we do qualify for the funds. But of course, there is a process managed by the state that we have to apply and get approval for our intended use of those funds. So, that's where we are today. So, the first is Title I. Title I is intended for improving basic programs and based on providing supplemental supports to schools with high levels of student need. We have 15 elementary schools, three middle schools, and one high school that are currently Title I schools. The next is Title II-A. It is intended to support teachers, principals, and other school leaders in their work to improve the overall quality of instruction for all of our students. We chiefly look to those funds to help us support our initiatives to ensure our students are being taught by properly licensed and endorsed teachers, as well as leadership programs to grow our own principals and administrators, as well as our Great Beginnings induction program for new teachers. So, those are the chief areas that we focus on with those funds. Title III-A supports services for students who are English learners. And Title IV-A is for student supports and academic enrichment. There are three categories under those funds for which they are intended to be used, providing a well-rounded education, safe and healthy students, and the effective use of technology. Final award amounts for federal programs are usually not available until late summer or early fall. So, we are always instructed to use the current year allocation amount when doing our applications. So, that's what you see in the applications that are attached to the agenda, our 24-25 allocation. I will share that recent information that's come from the state does indicate there's a possibility of a little bit of an increase to our Title I funds. So, that's certainly good news. Again, we won't know that for sure until late summer or early fall. But on the flip side, while there was a pretty common view of business as usual with federal funding and that sort of thing, we're hearing a little bit of a pullback on the other title awards from the state level, a little bit less sure. So, I know they're going to take our applications. We still have this process that we must submit. But the timeline might be a little bit longer for Title II, III, and IV. But of course, information is changing all the time. So, we'll certainly keep you posted on that. So, that is what we have for you today. And you see the amounts, about 8.2 million for Title I, just over 800,000 for Title II, a little bit over 200,000 for Title III, and just over 570,000 for Title IV, is what we're requesting your approval for today. These applications do require signature by the superintendent and school board chair. So, that's specifically what we're asking for your authorization of.
Thank you, Mrs. Jackson. Does the board have any comments or questions for Mrs. Jackson about the entitlement funds? All right. Is there a motion and a second to approve Roanoke City Schools' individual applications for federal funds for the 2025-2026 school year and authorize appropriate signatures to fulfill the requirements of the applications?
So moved.
Second. Second by Ms. Trigg. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Jackson. I'll now ask Dr. Jonathan Schultz, our Executive Director of Division Accountability and Strategic Initiatives, and his Assistant Director, Melissa Eckert, to come forward to review and for your approval of the revised strategic plan and to share that brief presentation with you for the approval. So, the second.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Jameson, Madam Vice Chair Appel, members of the board, and Dr. White. Dr. Schultz and I are here this evening to review the strategic plan revision process and share the revised plan for approval. So, we started the process back at the October school board retreat where we received your approval to begin the revision process. Then, at the February retreat, we shared the revised plan through a crosswalk and received your feedback. We provided an update in April as we continued working with our pathway teams to refine the plan. Then, in May, we shared the public feedback that we collected and incorporated into the plan. And now, we're here to request final approval of the revision. So, we did invite the community to be involved in the process. So, we had two public feedback sessions. We received input through a public survey. And we presented the revision to the superintendents, teacher advisory council, central council PTA, the Roanoke Education Association, and our principals. So, we are grateful to all of those groups for their feedback and collaboration.
And so, similar to the budget book, our book is not as sturdy as the budget book because it's a little thinner. So, if you are to approve, please tear carefully. But you do have the final pretty version in front of you. I want to thank my team, who I think did a great job leading and organizing the revision. But also, you'll see the thank you page. There are a lot of people that put a lot of hours into this to get it to this point. So, we're grateful for all those people who helped us with that. Do you have any questions?
Very good. Are there any questions for Dr. Schultz and Ms. Eckert?
Thank you. Great job.
I would, I would, I would just say, I thought that our strategic plan was good before and appropriate to the moment. I think this is excellent work in taking what was a good document and making it executionable, clear targets, high standards, and another excellent document to help steer the division into the future. I really thank you for your work and everybody's input and collecting all that input. It's a strong document, so thank you. I mean, this team did so much work and, I mean, the entire team just to streamline the process and to make it really actionable and also taking the feedback from the community and listening and pivoting in that way is just hats off. So, thank you. The best thing about, you know, when you look into things like adaptive leadership, what they say if you want to get people to get engaged in change is take the core of who you are and just make the outside of it better to meet the future. And I think that's what you've done. So, nice work. Thank you. All right. Is there a motion and a second to approve the revised strategic plan, 2022 to 2028, as presented?
So moved.
Second. Second by Ms. Watkins. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, rip gently. Very good. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you to your team. I'd now like to ask our Assistant Superintendent of Student Success and Support Services, Dr. Haley Poland, and Executive Director of Special Education, Dr. Nick Pontius, to share information about what we're calling Operation Nest, which is designed to increase the number of students attending their zoned home schools. So, welcome.
Good evening, Dr. Jameson, Ms. Appel, members of the board, Dr. White. Thank you so much for this opportunity for Dr. Poland and I to talk to you about what we're doing with Operation Nest tonight. I want to thank everybody who was a participant in this, from Dr. Durham, staff. So many people went in to give in their collaboration and feedback on Operation Nest. But before we begin, I want to give you a little bit of a history to tell where we've been, the why a little bit, the deeper reasons, and then take you forward to where we are today and then where we hope to go tomorrow and into the future. So, if you'll bear with me here, I'm going to be a little bit of a storyteller. But first, I want you to meet Judy. Judy was born in about 1949. And when she was 18 months old, Judy contracted polio, which left her confined to a wheelchair. And when Judy's mom took Judy to school, the school turned to Judy and said, and her mom, and said, Judy, you can't come to school. You're a fire hazard. So, Judy remained at home. But like every mother should, she advocated for her child and got Judy into school by the time she was in fourth grade. Judy then went on to finish school and graduate school and go to college and became a teacher. She returned to school to teach. The principal turned to her and said, Judy, you can't teach here. You're a fire hazard. Fast forward to 1965, it's Christmas time. A group of reporters go undercover in the state institutions. And this is what they uncover. It shocked the conscience of the nation. In fact, they said, there's a hell on earth. And in America, there's a special inferno. 1975, we made a promise to our children with disabilities. And it's a promise that is worth making and worth keeping. And we all play an important role in it. And baked into special education, this is IDEA when it was passed in 1975, celebrating our 58 years in special education. And in that, there's this concept of the least restrictive environment, or LRE. It's core to what is special education. And in that says, "To the maximum extent appropriate, children with disabilities are educated with children who are not disabled. And that special class is separate schooling or the removal of children with disabilities from the regular educational environment occurs only when the nature and severity of the disability is such that education in regular classes with the use of supplementary agent services cannot be achieved satisfactory." We call that the mainstreaming mandate, why we prefer inclusion. More recently, in 2012, in Virginia here, the Department of Justice settled with the training centers. And baked in that, there's an interesting regulation or requirement that individuals with disabilities be served in the most integrated settings. So, I wanted to share a little bit of where we're at. Here's a map of our city schools, of our elementary attendance zones. The black line outlines, and you'll see the blue hash marks, of where we do not have programs. So, if you see in the purple is West Side, and then over on the side, yellow is Garden City. Those are where we have our special programs right now. And first, I'd like to kudos to Transportation, Mr. Perkins, for the amazing job of busing our kids, trying to get them to our special programs. And as you can see, that presents some serious challenges when you're trying to get kids from different areas of the city to very few special programs. And on top of that, we have special regulations that limit the number of students in a classroom to eight. And so, when one classroom is filled, say at Garden City or Morning Side or Fallon or West Side or Hurt or Rams, that means we have to move the child to another classroom. And so, we're playing this constant catch-up and match of trying to find a place for a child to go to school. Many times, it's not going to be in their home schools. So, what we've been working on with Operation Nest is how to get kids back to their home schools. And so, Dr. Poland's going to share a little bit more about that with you.
Good evening. So, as Dr. Pontius said, we really have to have our students in the schools where they are. We have asked our families to split their children sometimes. We're asking them to support their student in two different buildings. So, we are really focused on our preschool classrooms being in where they will then transition to kindergarten and then transition with their same peers to middle school, then to high school. Same thing for our students with disabilities. We want our students to transition from preschool to elementary school to middle school with their same peers. Their peers that they're playing in the park with, they're going to church or to a community event with. This is really why we are here. And Dr. Pontius talked a little bit about our numbers. We have increased, I know that you heard him talk in the April meeting with our annual plan about our number of students specifically with autism that has increased over the past several years. We can't have our students not receive the very best that their peer, their same non-disabled peers are receiving. So, we really want to make sure that we're not stressing our families and our teachers and our, and our school buildings. So, we actually started Operation Nest last year. You all have, you all heard about our English language learners who were moved from elementary school school. They went back to their home schools at Grandin, Crystal Spring, and Roanoke Academy. They had previously been served in other elementary schools. Our middle school students all returned to their home schools this year. This is part of Operation Nest. We have provided that scaffolding and that support for our students and for our staff to be able to make sure that our teachers and our students are receiving English language support in their home schools. So moving to Phase Two, we are starting with our early childhood programs in preschool. So we have currently our students who are zoned for Virginia Heights, they attend Fallon Park. So we are moving that classroom back to Virginia Heights to be served in their zoned school. Our students, there is a special education classroom at Garden City. There are no Garden City students in that classroom. So we are moving that classroom to Fallon Park, where there are zoned students. We have a preschool classroom at Roanoke Academy, serves Preston Park students. So that classroom is going to Preston Park. We also have a three-year-old classroom at Highland Park that has low enrollment. So that, closing of that classroom and moving those students to their zoned schools will be able to provide collaborative services, just as Nick, Dr. Pontius was talking about, making sure that we're providing service for our students in the least restrictive environment. And that is part of that three-year-old move. We've also been working with Transportation. Mr. Doughty was here earlier. I'm not sure if he's still here, but he and Mr. Perkins have worked tremendously with us on feeder patterns. And so we want to make sure that if we have students that do need to go to a different building because of space, that we have a very specific feeder pattern that our parents are aware of, our teachers are aware of, and Transportation is aware of as well.
Nick?
I'll turn it back to you.
Nick is fine. Catch up here. So we have 340 students requiring our adaptive curriculum or special education self-contained classrooms, where they spend the majority of their services in a special education classroom, with through early childhood, elementary, and middle high school through that continuum. And as you're aware, we go up through age 22, and that's going to be starting off also that new program with RCPS Life. But looking at our current situation, as I alluded to, with from West Side, Garden City, Rams, and Morningside, looking at how we're best being able to support that, we needed additional classrooms, not only to meet the growing population, but also to try to serve them as close to their home schools as possible. We were looking at our projections, sorry, I jumped over that one, looking at our projected sites for next year, looking at adding a classroom to Crystal Springs. These are the yellow highlights, Fairview, Fishburne Park, Highland, Lincoln Terrace, Monterey, Round Hill, to be able to expand that. Now, is this all the schools? It is not. We're not able to get to everyone right now. But as we look forward to the years to come, looking at where our populations are and how that works, maybe that's appropriate for those other schools. In the middle schools, looking at adding to Woodrow Wilson and Fishwick, we'll be having their first classroom to meet the students' needs at Fishwick. We're very excited for that. And expanding our therapeutic classroom as well at Woodrow. Still looking at Breckenridge in the future. High school, not looking at any changes now. We're watching Patrick Henry based on their current levels, but that program is running really well there. So in summary, looking at, as I just highlighted in the yellow, but I'm going to get to Phase Three, where we're seeing where we're going, because we're looking to the future here. We do see we're excited for the new Preston Park building. That's exciting news. Adding classrooms for Preston Park students is going to be a huge relief and need. So we're excited to expand that. Looking at Monterey, space is very tight at Monterey, so we'll see how that pans out over the next year, and then looking at how that West Side looks too. So going to be monitoring that and seeing how things are shifting and working like that. But the principals and school staff have been really welcoming and understanding of the needs and trying to be helpful for that. For special education, looking again, as I shared with the Fairview, how that plays out. Again, it's tight there, but we think we can look to that in the future. Also with Preston Park, probably having three classrooms there. Breckenridge would be a huge one as well, that area, the Preston Park-Breckenridge area, and then looking at our high schools for the next futures, in the future needs. So this is change for people, for students and families and staff. So we're communicating with our principals and teachers, and many teachers have, some have volunteered to move and want to do that, and some will be new hires as we go through that. And then we're going to be contacting families to communicate that, that, hey, good news, we have a program to meet your child's needs right there in your neighborhood. And I've heard from some families already that this has kind of leaked out a little bit, that they're excited, say, "Hey, Dr. Pontius, my kid gets to go to school with their brother or sister, or I don't have to be on two separate buses," and looking at those kinds of things. So that's a relief for families to the maximum extent we can be able to have kids in that. And the other benefit is they'll be able to matriculate through with their same-age peers. And if you could form those relationships and that kind of introduction earlier on, that's going to pay dividends in the high school, so they know each other and they can support each other. The biggest thing is when your peers are advocating for you, your peers are helping you out, that's going to pay dividends as they matriculate together through schools. So contact and letters will be going home this week, talking with them, shoring that up, seeing where's appropriate for that and how that looks. And of course, there might be times where there's a fourth or fifth grader that that's just not the right move, and we're going to work through those situations appropriately and be as accommodating as we can based on how we space and the needs allow. So we're not going to try to force it on a fifth grader who has great relationships with his teacher. We understand those dynamics as well, so we're going to be sensitive to that. Providing great professional development for our teachers, we're excited to be able to go deeper with our behavioral specialists, therapists, being able to expand that into the schools to meet kids there. So they're going to have a lot of wraparound services to be able to meet the students' needs and have the behavioral specialist or whatever that. So it's an exciting plan. I think it's the right direction to go with to support our students. All right, my parting thoughts. I'm going to leave you with two dates. 1975, I alluded to earlier, the advent of special education with the passage of IDEA. And then 1990 is the passage of ADA, Americans with Disabilities Act. But I want to bring to your attention the dates when our schools were built. Now, many of them have been renovated and renovated very well since these times, but at its core, there's still limited spaces, because some of our classrooms, I needed space for 10 students. And so it's hard to take a classroom that was designed for 30 to cut it down to 10, or I might need two of those. And some of our needs are just very different. And so these present really real challenges. And so that's kind of also the other factor, that it's not just as simple as, let's just move all the kids back. There's serious limitations in some places and some things. And many of our schools predate the passage of these laws. But as a good educator, I do have homework for you. If you have Netflix, I recommend you watch Crip Camp, is one of the most amazing documentaries I've ever seen. And staff, I highly recommend it. I think you will thoroughly enjoy it. So please, make sure your homework's done. I'll send out a quiz next week.
Oh, my gosh.
That's it. Questions? I want to thank everybody, from Transportation to Operations to Data to Dr. White to teachers who have given feedback in this. It's not as easy as it sounds. So thank you to everybody that's done that. So I'll take any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Dr. Poland and Dr. Pontius, for this presentation. Are there questions or comments from the Board?
Questions, but great job. I know it was definitely in your heart when we first met and referenced making sure that the students were back at their home schools, so that really warms my heart, because they'll be around their peers.
Thank you.
I have just one question.
Yes, ma'am.
I love the fact that we're integrating our students back with their schools. The one question that I have, and great work on this, is are we using traditional recruiting and hiring methods for the extra teachers that we're going to need for the programs?
All of the above, yes.
All right. I just wanted to make sure. I had a note on that I wanted to ask that question. Excellent. So Mr. McKee's group team will be on it.
Yes, ma'am.
Top fairs, recruiting, all the things. Okay, and they're the best that ever did it, so thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Oh, yes, thank you. Thank you. I know it's been something that we've been talking about since I started here, almost a year.
Wow, almost a year.
And it's good to finally have the kids go to their home schools. So thank you.
I was really glad when we got the EL services balanced out over the middle schools last year, knowing that Breckenridge, you know, has a very high population of EL students and getting them to their home school as opposed to being bused to Woodrow or Fishwick. And so to see this playing out even further, I think it is a testament in real time to what it means to know your students by name and by need. So thank you, and this is, you know, I look forward to the next update on how this is going.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you all. This student, all our students are important. This is student population we don't always hear exciting news about, and then we don't lift up often enough. So it's really nice to see this program.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you, team.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, and I just also want to say thank you to Dr. Pontius. Thank you, Dr. Poland, Mr. Freeman, Dr. Williams, and the teams, and all of the teams, Mr. Perkins. And again, this has taken a tremendous amount of coordination and collaboration to really understand, well, where do we have and what do we need and how, talk about differentiation, right? And so just thank you for all of your hard work.
You said it's not as easy as it sounds. It doesn't sound easy.
Okay. Thank you. Well, I thought, I envisioned it as being easy, but...
But this is the right work for the right reasons. So thank you for your work.
Thank you. Appreciate it. And Madam Chair, that ends, that concludes my report. All right. Thank you so much, Dr. White. Ms. Jackson, would you mind presenting the financial forecast and fund balance for us this evening?
Not at all. Good evening again. So we have for you tonight our monthly update for the current year budget. This is reporting through the month of April. So I'll just jump in. We'll start with our dental fund, looking at our revenue picture. When we compare against the three-year average of actuals, we're forecast to be just over about $1 million above budget on the revenue side. And on the expenditure side, forecast to be about $4.7 million below budget when we compare against that three-year average. There we go. So we did approve a budget that proposed using about $1.75 million out of fund balance. So were we to end the year, based on our experience up through April, we would potentially be in a position to actually add just over $4 million to fund balance. I will point out that, I know we've had a lot of conversation about the fact that the state required us to adopt new textbooks this year, which was not originally planned. That cost is approximately $3 million. That is not reflected in that number yet, and we had not made that purchase as of April. So that is something coming that, thanks to the availability projected there, that enabled us to move forward with that required purchase this year. So you'll see that coming in future months. So here, just reflected graphically, our fund balance over time and how that would potentially change. And then moving on to our Food Services Fund through April, based on our comparison to that three-year average of actuals, we're forecast to be about $360,000 below budget on the revenue side. So not favorable, but on the expenditure side, we are also forecasting to be a bit below budget by about $900,000. So we did adopt a budget that proposed using about $1.5 million out of the Food Services Fund fund balance. So were we to end the year based on experience thus far, it looks like we would only use just under $1 million of that, out of that fund balance. And you see that fund balance change over time there. So that's where we are through the month of April, but I'm happy to take questions or comments.
Are there questions for Ms. Jackson? Jackson, I have, because I don't think you've gotten a chance to talk enough today. I know. I'm wondering if at this point it might be helpful if, because we have been talking so much about budget, if you could remind us all when we actually know how much money we have left over at the end of the year? If you could talk a little bit about how that closeout process plays out and over what period of time?
Sure. That does, unfortunately, we don't have that information exactly on June 30. Our fiscal year does end June 30th, but we have a 60-day accrual window after that whereby we're paying bills. We are required to reflect expenses in the period in which they happened. So if we receive a service in June, for example, but we don't get that bill until July, that expense, even though we paid that bill in July, needs to be reflected in the current fiscal year. So that's a process that we're working through in the first couple of months of the new year, making sure we're reflecting expenses and revenues in the right period. So really, it is probably around September or so that we're kind of completing that process and getting a sense of really where we are to finish the year. And then that leads us up to ultimately closing the books by the end of October, and that's through our audit process. So that, you know, is not done, done, until the external auditors review all of our financials. So...
Thank you. I thought that seemed a little relevant. This is as tight a budget year as we've had in a while. I mean, coming down to, a million dollars is a lot of money, but in a budget our size, that's pretty tight.
Pretty tight, yes.
So it's important to know, we won't actually know for a while, I think. So thank you for explaining that to us. Any other questions from the Board? All right. Is the, as we look at the financial statements, is there anything unusual to report this evening?
I don't have anything additional to add, but I'm certainly happy to take questions.
Are there any questions?
Okay.
Ms. Watkins?
I think we're going to get to it.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Ms. Jackson.
Thank you.
The statements will be received and filed. But let's move on to our committee reports. Let's start with, are there any standing or ad hoc committees that we need to have a report on tonight? Audit, I think we've had a lot of budget and capital expense, we're probably covered on that. Or naming committee, CTE, nothing on that.
I did want to talk about the SBA conference that I went to, the law conference. I just wanted to touch on it just a little bit. It was super informative, and I know that Ms. Collins, I think you joined online, right?
That's correct.
It was eye-opening to me, just a couple of things that I learned, is the difference between some of the executive orders and what they call the Fourth Circuit case law, and how they kind of differ, and sometimes they're alike, and how language is interpreted differently. There's stuff, there's a lot of stuff happening. I'll give you just, you know, like, you know, one example of something that I thought was interesting. A law, by 2027, foods in the U.S., it's going to impact our food services, cannot have certain dyes in it. And so those are things that you have to think about when you're thinking about food service, you know, and our providing that for our students and what stuff will cost and, you know, and that type of thing. And just, you know, information technology, there's changes there, teacher training, there's all kinds of, there's all kinds of changes in coming our way. And as I stated earlier, you know, this year is tough, but I feel sure that it's going to get even tougher as we, as some of the challenges and barriers that I think are going to hamstring us a little bit are coming forth. And we're not, you know, no one has a crystal ball. We don't know what, you know, what will be in the end. But there's some pretty interesting, you know, things on the table that will impact our students and their families. ADA, all kinds of things. It's just interesting how you could have, you know, federal government, state government, case law, all have different points of view of how to interpret a law. And I think that goes, you know, that'll play out a little bit when we talk about other things too, how, you know, rules seem clear upfront, you know, at face value, but then you can interpret them so differently. And so it was very, very interesting. And I did have a chance to speak with some of the folks that are on the committee with me, the subcommittee with me, while I was there for students in schools in challenging environments. And we're working on just peer-to-peer connections, how can we help other schools? Because we've done some amazing things in our CTE programs and within our division under Dr. White's guidance and our leadership, or our guidance or her leadership, and just sharing that information with my peers and gathering what they've done too, to bring it back to you all. So it was all worth, you know, the day trip to go to Richmond to attend. And I encourage anyone who wants the material, I have it if you want to... And I, I encourage anyone who wants the material, I have it if you wanna see some of the things that we talked about.
Wonderful. Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Thank you for spending the time doing that. I know it, it's always hard to find the time, but, but it's important for us to stay abreast of what's changing in, in the fields. Good. Anything from Special Education that maybe we've already? Yeah, I think we've had it this evening. Looking through, we've got a Policy Governance and Legislative Priorities Committee report.
Yes.
Very good.
Okay, the Superintendent's Policy Governance and Legislative, PGL Committee, is scheduled to meet June 16th, 2025, to review and consider policy recommendations from the Virginia School Board Association's Summer Policy Update, based primarily on legislation, legislation from the 2025 General Assembly in addition to local policies due for five-year review. The committee's recommendations are expected to be presented to the boards for first review at the June 24 Board Workshop and for consideration for adoption at the July 8, 2025 meeting. The PGL Committee will receive updates regarding the current Community Feedback System Software Application, ethics point by Navex, and the board's current legislative consultant, Advanta Strategies.
Thank you. All right. Any other reports I'm looking through? I have a quick GovSchool, RVGS report. Basically, I was unable to attend the last meeting, but we did pass a budget for 2024, 2025. The budget has been adjusted. There'll be 273 students budgeted for next year, and tuition was set at $4,715 per student. The, I have continued, this is my first year on the RVGS Committee. I continue to be impressed at the way they are running and their ideas, both administratively and educationally for their students. They are investing in, this is not on my list, but they have some of the coolest stuff in that building. I don't do science, but it, I just wanna touch it. It's really, I mean, it's amazing. We've had amazing support from the community. It's stuff that they've gotten donated. It's really remarkable. It's worth calling over there and seeing if you can take a look. The students, the students are very impressive. And so, so they deserve, Mr. Levy and his work with RVGS and the committee that supports it really deserve the call-out for that, for that. They are hiring, they will have two new staff members next year, they, in chemistry and physics. So they will be adding new folks to their team next year. RVGS has had a tough year, I think personally, so it is, it's good that they are closing strong and with some new things on the future. So they had a very successful senior dinner at Hotel Roanoke on May 12th, and Mr. Levy has been named Chair of the Virginia Advisory Committee for Advanced Learning. So he'll be the representative of governor schools across the state. Dr. White, anything you would add? I know, I, I was still in question that you were there.
Oh, no, no. It's a, it's a very tightly-knit team, and just hats off to Mr. Levy and his team. And, and I know that they've suffered some losses this year, and so, but they have pulled through and joint, and joint forces, and I just, the students are remarkable, and they always do fantastic.
Is a, it is a valuable addition to our student offerings, so. Are there any other reports from any committees this evening? All right, so let's, oh, good. Yes, let's do that.
Definitely would like to thank both high schools for sending over some great candidates for our new student representatives. As we interviewed them, we had some bright, young candidates that did extremely well. From Patrick Henry, we will have John Lopez Ortiz. He was phenomenal in his interview. And we have Stephen Wade from William Fleming, who was also just as phenomenal and literally leaving out of track practice to make his interview. They did extremely well. We're looking very forward to having them, and they'll start in our.
August? August meeting?
Uh, it might be September.
September.
They're off.
They're off.
They are.
They start school.
Yeah, we're not.
We're not.
But we were looking forward to them starting in September, and you all will see them up here. And they're two bright, young men, and I'm very excited to be a part of it.
Very good. Thank you. All right, let's, we do have some ongoing business this evening. So we'll, I think, at this point, I'll turn it over to you, Dr. White. We'd like to have a conversation about the bonus conversation.
Yep. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Jamison. And before I begin, I do want to say thank you again to everyone. Everyone who shared questions and comments, concerns about the state bonus, so thank you for that. I know many of you are here tonight or perhaps tuning in virtually because you care deeply about these issues. And so your voices matter, and I just want you to know that you are heard. So thank you again. So let me start by saying, and at a place where I typically start and finish, and that is, our people matter, right? We need people for our people. And so we are in a people business, right? We're not in a, in a robot business. We're in a people business. And so our schools cannot function without staff. Remember during COVID, I talked about if we don't have staff, we don't have school. And so it's important to all of us that we treat our people right. And so every single staff member plays a critical role in making sure that our students receive the best education that they deserve. And so I'm going to tell you what you already know, but I think it is a good reminder for all of us of the various staff members that we're talking about. Yeah, our custodians, for instance, keep our buildings safe and clean and welcoming. And our administrative assistants are often the first faces that our families see and are on the front lines. And our counselors, our social workers, our psychologists, support our students' psychological and emotional well-being. And our student support specialists help our students show up on, to school on time. And our principals, assistant principals, lead the way, and they manage and lead all of it. And of course, our teachers bring their classrooms to life. And so every single day, and, and we would not have an effective educational program otherwise. And so I just want to take a moment just to thank every single staff member. Would you help me, join me in thanking our staff? Because when, when we do say we are one, again, it's not just a slogan, that's not just a tagline. That's how we feel, and that's how we operate, and this is what we mean. It takes all of us, everybody, working together every day, to move the needle on student performance and to take care of, of our students. So we are grateful to the General Assembly and to the governor for including fund, and funding in the state budget for bonus, which the legislation says that school divisions have flexibility to use to promote retention. So we believe that in showing appreciation, and we believe in showing that appreciation in real tangible ways. But tonight, we do want to take a moment just to provide some context and to the situation. So the state presented this as a $1,000 teacher bonus, but this is based on $1,000 per funded instructional and support standards of quality, or SOQ positions. So these are the positions that the state requires school divisions to fund based on minimum staffing formulas. Roles like teachers, librarians, media specialists, school counselors, principals, and assistant principals. But we employ far more than the minimum number of SOQ positions, particularly in a larger urban school division like ours. So you'll hear more in a minute, and I'll ask Mrs. Jackson to, to talk about this a little bit more. Again, I think context matters and the why matters, so it's important for us just to spend some time here. So this, you'll hear again about this in a minute, but this would require us to kind of pick and choose even among teachers who receives the bonus if we only went by the SOQ, right? Even among teachers. So beyond that, we have additional positions that are not SOQ-funded at all. So for instance, our targeted school improvement mentors were originally funded through a grant, and we made the intentional decision to continue supporting them and supporting our schools with local funds last year because their work is critical to our schools, right? Critical, and, and we know that we appreciate their work. So they're not required by the state, but we knew that we couldn't afford to lose our targeted school improvement mentors. And so that's the difference between just doing what is required and doing what is right. And so when we talk about doing what is right, that includes doing everything that we can to provide a bonus to all of our staff members, not just picking and choosing based on the state formula. And that's the way that we have done it in the past, and that's what the, the proposal is moving forward. So when we talk about a division-wide bonus, in keeping with past, past practice, I do want to clarify that we, we are not, we do not and have not talked about including executive directors, or assistant superintendents, or chiefs, or even me, right? So the division-wide bonuses, the past bonuses and the ones that we're talking about right now do not include those positions. So over the past five years, we have taken meaningful steps to support and retain our teachers and staff because, and I think someone mentioned it here tonight, retention is not just salary, not just bonuses. Those things are important, but support requires us to have a comprehensive approach. And I just want to just share that those things are important, are equally important as well. And I want to bring that back up tonight as a reminder for all of us that creating, for instance, a professional learning department and having professional learning offerings and providing those connections are important. So I just want to take some time to thank the board for supporting these efforts as well. Launching mentoring programs for new educators and for new administrators. We've responded to direct staff feedback. You'll keep in mind that we brought the proposal forward last year so that we could employ lunch aids, so that teachers would have the benefit of duty-free lunch that they deserve, right? So again, support and help has to feel like help, and so putting in place those kinds of things. We provided a raise every single year in, in our budget proposals. And I want to thank you for passing this past budget so that, because there's another raise in, in this year's budget again. And remember, just a few years ago, we included a 14% raise for our, our employees as well. So we've also issued locally-funded bonuses where, when we had the capacity to do so. So I know that by now, everyone knows that this year is a little different. We've talked about that a little bit more, that this is a tight budget year. As you've already heard, we've, we're receiving the same amount of funding from the city as we did last year. And federal funding, we know, can be somewhat uncertain at this time, right? And so at the same time, our needs are growing. So we must align our student resources with the state's revised standards. We must add 40 English learner, teacher resource, teaching positions as part of the new SOQ, right? And so again, I'm telling you what you already know, but I think context matters. And we are still going to provide the raises that we've talked about for staff next year because we know that real support is not just a one-time thing. It's about long, a long-term investment. But given all of these factors, we are not certain at this point that we'll be able to match the state's bonus funding to provide $1,000 to every employee. And that's what I'd like for us to spend some time talking about tonight. This is where I want to, again, lift up our finance team because they are thoughtful and careful. Because one thing is for sure, again, it's not as easy as just taking, because that, you know, again, this proposal has to be fair, but it also has to be sustainable. Running in the red is not an option for Roanoke City Public Schools. We have been good fiscal stewards. We have been able to manage our money very well. And it would be easy for us to just say, take the state's funding, and for us to say, okay, you get $1,000, you get $1,000, you get $1,000, you get $1,000. But would that be responsible? What we have to do as responsible leaders, we do have to take a measured approach to make sure that it is sustainable, and that's how we've been able to manage so well thus far. And again, it might end up being that way, but we do have to be thoughtful and careful. And so, again, especially because we are the largest school division in southwest Virginia, and we have greater complexities. We do have more employees, right? And so we are kind of a unicorn in that sense, that we are not like our neighbors, and that we do have other complexities that we have to consider. And again, the context matters. So we, as we are considering a thoughtful approach, we do have to continue to consider the needs, sustainability, fairness, and the long-term impact. And with the state providing this funding on June 1st, that's when we got the disbursement, correct, Mrs. Jackson? Right. So we knew that with the disbursement coming to us on June 1st, we have a lot of checks to disburse. So again, to, to turn around to June 15th would have been nearly impossible in a, in a, in a large school division, which is why we're having this discussion now. So I wanted to take a moment just to kind of share some of the context, because I think context matters, that's gone into where we are now. And so, Mrs. Jackson, I'll have you take it from here to provide even greater context. And then I would ask the board to, let's just talk about it a bit and have some discussion about this so that we can find our way forward.
Thank you. Yeah, if we could have just a few slides, if we could pull those up, thanks. Just having a vis, whoop, oh. There we go. Okay. Having a visual sometimes helps. So as Dr. White said, this is just for your reference, if you need to refer back to it, kind of a portion of the, the budget bill that, that does talk about the average $1,000 bonus per SOQ, how it's calculated for school divisions and intended to be used to maximize the funds to promote retention. Additionally, I have some information here that we received from the Virginia Department of Education, Chief Operating Officer, giving us some more clarity on, and direction as school business officials, what was intended. And so, so that gave us some additional guidance that, you know, have to use the fund for bonus. We can determine the timing. We are permitted, it is allowable to, to issue the bonus in early fiscal '26 based on, you know, the challenges and constraints of timing to get that done before employees' final paycheck, which for 10-month employees is the June 15th. So that's just some of, but again, as Dr. White said, the context of the information that we have received and been using. So Dr. White kind of addressed this, but I just want to say a few more about kind of what does an average $1,000 bonus per SOQ-funded position mean? As Dr. White said, we do not get state funding for all of the positions that are needed to truly have quality education. So they just use that number of, here's the SOQ positions that we, we do identify and fund partially, and multiply that by 1,000 to decide, here's how much money you're going to get each, for each school division. So just a couple of examples, as, as Dr. White mentioned, just to put that in context, it's, it's not as straightforward as, you know, that only mean, that means all teachers, but it doesn't mean instructional aides or anything like that. For example, we have 27 kindergarten aides currently, 11, we get partial funding from the state for 11. So, you know, if we were, if we were just to say, we're only gonna, we're only gonna move forward with standards of quality positions, we'd have to determine which of those 11 kindergarten aides are SOQ positions and which 16, sorry, aren't getting any bonus. We have 44 assistant principals division-wide. We only get partial state funding for eight and a half of those. So there again, that would be about 35 and a half people who would be left out. Out of 15 elementary music teachers, we only receive partial state funding through the standards of quality for seven. So that would, we'd have to kind of decide, you know, which eight were gonna be out of luck. So of course, we don't want to do that. You know, all of those, those people and the many, many more work very hard in our schools and for our students. So, so that's why when we do have these opportunities for bonuses, we want to look at all of our employees, with the exception of executive directors and above, and make sure that regardless of their position, that those folks would get a bonus. So as you've heard, have some, some challenges financially going forward into the next year. So that is the reason that we've been looking at just the allocation that we have been told we will, we, well, we have gotten at this point. From the state, it's just over $1.45 million. So based on, you know, account of our, our staffing as it is right now, that would amount to unfortunately only about a $555 bonus for full-time employees. And typically in the past, we've done, we've done 50% of whatever the bonus is for, for part-time employees, as you see there. And how we kind of landed on our thinking of, of looking at this in the fall, partially timing. You know, as we said, the June 15th is the final paycheck for 10-month employees. It's actually June 13th, it's Friday, because the 15th is a weekend, so that shortens our payroll time all the more. We have a three-person payroll team with, and one, one part-time person. So I'm just trying to think through the logistics of making sure we have everybody included. included, and that kind of thing did not seem feasible, given that we just received the funds by June 1. So, so that's kind of why, and because the language was in there about making sure that this is used for retention, we thought, okay, well, maybe the fall would be the time, you know, to really acknowledge and reward that retention. If folks come back, they would receive the bonus. So that's kind of how we landed on that as our proposal. I know there's been a lot of conversation about, and some school divisions have been able to add to the state funding to try to get up to that $1,000 for employees. That would cost almost 1.17 million additional dollars in local funds if we were to try to do that, which, as we've discussed for the current year and next year, is not necessarily something that is in the cards for us at this point, unfortunately. But that is the, the kind of, the proposal that we've been looking at and working towards, but certainly welcome your discussion and recommendations for how we move forward.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Thank you, Dr. White.
Thank you.
So comments, questions, thoughts from the school board? As that's, that's our turn.
Hey, up there.
Yeah. Thank you. Do you want to start down there this time?
Do you want to?
Um, no, start down there. We always start my end. I don't care. So my only concern is when I think about situations like this, I think about how would I feel if I was in that six shoes, right? Being a former teacher, former educator, even in my position now where I work, if I am heavily excited about a bonus and I know it's going to be this time every year, I'm going to want the bonus, right? Nine times out of 10, it depends on what you do. You may have already allocated where you might want those funds to even go to, whether it's tires for your car to even get to work, whether it's putting your child in camp for the summer, or even the fact of, we did kind of change some things with summer school, so I might not got a chosen to even work summer school. So when I think of those things, it's almost saying, I don't know if I could wait till September, you know? So I have a thought process in mind and heart, just thinking of, what would I do? How would I feel? I can tell you, I look forward to when we get our annual bonuses every year. I can tell you that the check is going to come on, you know? Those are the things, even if I am financially stable in a sense, it's some extra, it's something I can do extra. It's something that I could maybe do for my kids or a family member that might need something. So my thoughts are, if we're able to do what we can, and if we're able, maybe, we can't get it June 15th, but maybe we can get it June 30th, or something like that. So. So it's, it's really a, I don't know. I, I think we need to think about it, and we need to see what we can do. Because one of the things, this has been a very tough year, and I just feel like the last thing I want to see is, we're having a hard time in every area and we don't need to have a hard time with our educators.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. J. I have more questions than comments about this, because I do, like you, I understand, and I have been in a situation where I was dependent, I have been in a situation where I was dependent on a bonus or some extra, or second job, third job even, right, in my lifetime. How, first question, how fast can we pay out whatever we're going to pay out?
We could, we could manage to do a special batch for June 30.
Okay. And then the next, and that would be my recommendation personally. And then, so when you were going through our financial outlook for the remainder of the year, and I know we were only up to April, but you noted that if things shook out, or if we were to end the year in April with what we have, you know, what we know right now, we were in a position to put, we could be in a position to put 4.4 to the, return 4.4 million to the fund balance. But I also heard you say that we are obligated to spend a little over $3 million for books. That only leaves us maybe a million, maybe a little bit more. So then the question becomes, and then, then I heard, then I see on the screen that it's 1.7 million to, to, to match and bring us up to the $1,000 bonus, right, for the, for retention. My question in stating all of that is, how much can we spare? I don't think that we can get to the thousand person, I mean, the $1,000 for each employee personally, because I think that puts us too close to the line. Maybe like zero says out, and we can't operate in the red. We cannot operate in the red. But if, my, my personal recommendation is for us to think about what can we spare to bring it up just a little bit. And I don't know what that looks like. I'm just asking that we take a look at what is, what is available that we feel like might be able to squeeze this out. And I know the trick will be, is that things won't be closed out by the end of June, for us to be able to truly say, what can we squeeze out, right? So I know that's tricky, but if there is anything that we can project, you know, that gives us some level of confidence, that there's something that we can, we can squeak out, let's, let's consider that. And then unpopular, what I'm going to say next is unpopular, is going to be unpopular, but it is necessary. The way I interpret this, and I, and I've been thinking about this since the law conference, and I said something to it sort of earlier, but I'm going to bring it on home, is that, you know, we can interpret things a lot of different ways. My interpretation of what I've seen and heard and way it's been explained to me is that this is a retention bonus. We can't, we have to take care of the folks that are coming back. I, I love our retirees and I thank them for their dedicated service to us, but this is retaining, this is a retention effort. So it would be those folks that are coming back. And if they've signed their contracts and they have assured us that they're coming back, then I think we handshake them with the bonus.
Thank you. Quintana?
So I'm gonna go ahead and piggy ride Joyce on what she just said. My problem from the beginning with this was, again, no disrespect, and I know it's not going to be viewed nicely, but our main concern is to retain the teachers that we have. The statistics say that our youngest teachers are the ones that we lose more rapidly because they get tired quickly. Like Joyce and I want to say, maybe even Dr. Jamison, this is a retention bonus. Do not get me wrong. We all have, have had amazing teachers, amazing colleagues that have mentored us, and we appreciate you, all the retirees. It's not that we're not thinking about it, but we have to move forward, and this is a year that we are tight. We cannot, we just cannot afford it to do it for the retirees and our incoming teachers.
Not the incoming.
Not the incoming, yeah. But, yeah, sorry, the returning, sorry, the returning. Yes.
So I appreciate the comments from all my colleagues thus far. My que, and I strongly agree with the idea of when we are good fiscal stewards of the year, every year that I've been on the board, we've been able to, at the end of the year, we've actually spent less than was, you know, we've, we've spent less than came in, and we've been able to put it into our rainy day fund. And this year is looking the same, even with having to pay for textbooks that was not originally accounted for. So I, I also am in favor of using every dollar that we had budgeted this year towards helping to balance this out. And, and this was a question that I know many board members had had, is what, what would it cost us, because it would cost us a check, what would it cost us to get $1,000 per staff member? So procedurally now, I know we just had a special board meeting in, in, at the end of May, because we had to technically move a category or whatnot. If we only spent the $555 per person, we wouldn't need to do anything because that came from the state. No vote would be required for that, I presume, right? But if we want to try to use these funds and move them, what, what vote do we need? Because we're not voting tonight on this, but we might have to move monies to a different category. And so logistically, legally, what, what would need to happen? Because that's going to affect any sort of timelines for staff.
Right. So if you want to move forward with the current fiscal year, we would have to look at, you know, really, how does it break down by category and just make sure that our budget are in the right buckets to incorporate that additional expense? So we can certainly take a look at that. I would say, I, I don't feel that I could give you a number of what we could add between now and June 30, because there, there's so much unknown and we're so close already on the budget. So I feel like if there is a desire on the part of the board to try to add to the bonus, that that would have to be sort of a part two to look at, once we know closer to, you know, once after June 30, we kind of know, okay, really, where are we? And then we could look at whether we could request using a portion of any, any that might be left over.
You're saying it's in two parts?
Correct, in a second.
So a part one, part two, kind of.
So in, like, like a, like a bonus installment, number one, and then a bonus?
Just the state funds. We could, we could handle that by June 30, because we've got that money, we know how much it is.
Employees would get part one, and then they would get part two.
I'm sorry.
Part one by?
June 30, if, if that's the will of the board.
And then part two.
Sometime into the fall of next year, once we have sort of final closeout information on the current year and know our process for our ability to use that, those funds next year.
That would be the 555?
Yes.
By June 30th? And then knowing that we have more, we'd be able to push more to get the 1,000, but it wouldn't be to the fall?
Correct.
And that is hoping that we have more. So the second part is up in the air.
Actually close the year.
I mean, I, I would want to throw this out. I mean, part of the reason, just to echo what you've already said, is that September 30 was the original date because it maximizes the amount we knew we could give, right?
Correct.
That, that, that's the reality check financially, right? But I, I, I'm not, I'm not swaying my, I'm not saying that that's what I support, but I do understand the logic of where that came from, right? Because by then, the books are closed and we know if they're, this is normally, most years, this would not be such a difficult conversation. This year, it's, it's a very tight one. So, did you have another question? I didn't mean to jump in.
No, it was just to clarify procedurally, because I, I would just add in a comment that my impression is that the board is in favor of trying to get the bonuses into staff hands in as timely a fashion as possible. So that is something that we have heard and is, you know, we would, is it, that's my understanding is the intention of the board, but logistically, what does that look like?
I think that it's important for us on the board to, to, to really state our intentions, right? I mean, if you have a different view or the same view, please state it. Like, I feel like folks are sitting in this room wanting to know how we feel about this.
Oh, I wanted to make us as whole as possible, using every bit of 24, 25 monies as are available, to get this as close to $1,000 for each, if that wasn't clear.
Let me ask you one more thing. I'm sorry. Go ahead. No, go ahead. So say if we can't get to the whole 1,000, and we may get to 800, what if that extra 200 is available by September 30? Should we still do that second portion, but get them as much as they can get now June 30?
Yeah, and I, I feel like we should be able to move forward with the state-funded portion.
Right.
Sooner rather than later. But yes, it would be sometime in the fall that we could come back to this topic and see, okay, how's it looking? You know, do we have funds that are available that we could add to it? Even if, I mean, I, I'm not saying at all that if we can't get it to what would make it a full 1,000, forget it, we're not doing it, just, you know, if, at that point, certainly if it's like, well, we can get it up to, you know, add another $200 or $300 to that, if the board is, is in favor of that, we could certainly entertain that at that point.
Well, I'm definitely in favor of doing as much as we can if I didn't completely make that clear. I'm in favor of that.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there, I, I think we know what you support. I got it. We got it. We got it. Is there, I, that, those amounts, the 555 and the 240? This, yes, those, are those pre-tax dollars, not post-tax dollars?
Pre-tax.
And, yeah, that, that's always, I, I'm always excited about us until I see the taxes.
Right.
And then I'm like, ah. So I, that's one thing I wanted to ask. But, but also, do we know, would there be any different tax implications if it was a two-part bonus? Because if, is there any difference? I hadn't thought about that before. I mean, I know we started talking about this yesterday. If we give a lump sum now, that's going to get taxes out, is there any other kind of tax implication to our employees if we do it again?
I don't know the answer to that. It does fall within the same tax year, so I, my thought would be probably not, but I can certainly look into that, because I, I don't.
I mean, that feels kind of, I mean, we don't, we don't want to be, find ourselves doing a negative thing when we're trying to do a good, good thing, right? I mean, and taxes are those, I don't know why there would be an implication either, but that is always this weird bucket effect, right? I mean, I, it seems worthwhile. And if that's the case, then the question becomes really to all of our staff and our teachers and our folks, would you rather have more money later if there's a tax implication? Or would you rather have the money right now, right? I mean, I mean, I, I get, I get it, but I mean, I think what you're hearing from the board is that we support trying to make it, you know? I would not support, and I don't hear you saying this would even be feasible, I do not support trying to give an estimate of how much money we could spend right now. I would, I would vote no to that. I mean, I, I, because this, this year doesn't, this year does, the only reason this conversation, right, the second about the, about money even exists, is because it's appropriated money we already may have after we've bought all the other things and the priorities are made. So I would not, I would not support that. I do support putting it in the hands of our, of our, of our staff, faculty, team as soon as it is fiscally possible, understanding the complexities that, that we face, for those who have signed a contract.
Yeah.
Who, who are returning.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was, I was going to clarify that. I had not stated that part, yes. I would also want it for people who have signed their contracts.
And I, and I, and I take that position, again, as I spend a lot more time just thinking a lot about retirement. I take that position mainly because it's how we've done it before. We have, I remember during COVID doing retention bonuses, and this is how we have done it before. This is not, this is, this is not inconsistent. So, I mean, I think what I'm hearing the board say is that we would be interested in distributing the state funding as soon as we can, provided there's no unforeseen weird tax implications to our employees if we do it twice. And if there is, then we need to have another conversation. I mean, there's a lot of nods in this room, they say, give me the money now, I, I see you. I, I'm not, I hear you. But, but you know, if we could get you to 800 or 900, I mean, it's just worth having the the answer to that question, you know?
And of course, we do, we, I, I think that it's important for folks to know that we have two other board members who are not here, but we have been talking about this. You know, we have been thinking, being very considerate of, kind of, you know, talking about this with our board members. And so we don't want to speak for them while they're not here, but this is how we, you know, who are present.
There's a sensibility.
There's, right.
Yeah. Well, and I would like to also thank Dr. White, who ensured that we were going to have this conversation tonight. I mean, we're not the only ones who thought, and Ms. Jackson, thank you for preparing this for us tonight, so we could have the conversation. Everybody here recognizes the importance of it, of this issue. So it is, we appreciate that you're here, we appreciate that you're speaking up, we do appreciate your enthusiasm, all of, all of those things. And, and I appreciate, you know?
And we, we understand the urgency.
Yeah. We don't.
We do understand the urgency.
Yeah, we don't, we don't take it lightly. We do not take it lightly. Personally, I'm a single mother, I get it. I completely get it. Unfortunately, we are in charge of the entire school system, but I hope you guys feel that we really consider you our priority.
And I, and as you said, I mean, we have tried, perhaps imperfectly at time, to be consistent about that. We, we don't reach children except through you.
I'd like to also add, I love the fact that no one's being left out. It's all about keeping our staff, you are the frontliners of taking care of our children. Having children in the school system and having the right people in front of them matters to me. I recognize a few faces, and I know some of you all have run across my children, and I appreciate you. And what you do does not go unnoticed. So it is important that we are not leaving anyone out, because that would be too much of a harder choice, but just, we can get where we can get to you, as soon as we could get to you. I know Ms. Jackson is going to do her best job, because she has been worked this year. So that does not go unnoticed, and she has a tough job along with her staff. So thank you, Ms. Jackson and Dr. White, because you all are making sure you're trying to include everyone that we are retaining that's coming back. Well, now I'm a hypocrite, because I like the applause.
If I could just kind of summarize and make sure, I know my marching orders. So I will go back and begin the process of, you know, what would this look like to use the state money to do bonuses by June 30? If, we will research the tax implications. If we find out there's something weird, we will pause and communicate with the school board at that time. Also, if there's any budgetary change that would be required of paying this before June 30 in terms of categorical, at that point, we may need to come back to the work session and.
Which case, that might be a special meeting.
Make that a special meeting and ask you to, to take action to make sure that we're on the up and up before we would make that payment.
But we'll start the movement in this direction even prior, now, right?
Which we would have to do, honestly, if we're, if we're aiming for June 30.
Right. For timing, we would have to.
The work session is too late for us to start processing that payroll.
Right.
We're finishing up that payroll.
But if we could have the, the next meeting, the work session turned to a special call meeting. I think that's. And then ask the board for your approval on, on the, on what Mrs. Jackson just proposed.
If needed.
And that way, we could still make that June 30.
Okay. So that will be our plan, and certainly we'll communicate if there are things that we become aware of that we didn't anticipate, that might take, require additional action and make, and require a delay there, but we'll aim for June 30.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. On top of everything else, thank you.
You know, this is taxing for your team, too. They're only human as well, and we're asking them to do, you know, some incredibly quick work. So thank them for us, please.
Yeah. And HR, too, it's not just.
And HR, too.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you, teachers.
Yes, thank, thank you all for being here. We do appreciate you. It's always nice to have you here, even when I'm a little afraid of you. I know, I'm teasing, I'm teasing. I'm teasing. I, I'm teasing you.
Thank you.
Teasing you. Yes, and thank you for being here, since you guys, since you're. Future business, that's, I think that's what we're at. We have some upcoming events, all the, oh! I'm very happy that we have an investiture for Mrs. Appel and Mrs. Watkins on June 18. Our returning board members, we are thrilled about that. Our next board workshop on June 24th, as we just mentioned, will become a special meeting, so it will be live streamed on our YouTube channel. On July 1st, the school board is having a mini-retreat. It's simply a, it's, it is a public meeting, we're just talking about leadership for the new year. So it's a short meeting where we're going to be doing some family business around, around the coming year. We have an exciting ribbon cutting, and then it'll be a minute, I think, until Preston Park. But July 25th, ribbon cutting for the Community and Engagement Center is, is, is coming. So that's exciting. August 1st through 3rd is Load the Bus. August 14th is Convocation at 9:00 a.m., and August 16th is the Back to School Extravaganza. So we are, so, I know. And in the middle of all that, everybody is expected to have a fabulous summer. And, and the board, yes.
And Load the Bus, where, is that like a tentative, or that's?
That's a tentative, okay.
August 1 through 3.
Very good. So the board is asked to set its July regular meeting. As you all may or may not know, every year, we have to re-vote to authorize our meetings for the coming year. At the July meeting, we will vote for all of that year's meetings, but until that time, we need to set its regular July meeting. The meeting will take place on July 8, 2025, at 6:30 at William B. Robertson Administration Building, right here at 201 Campbell. Is there a motion and a second to approve the July regular meeting for Tuesday, July 8, 2025, at 6:30 p.m. at the William B. Robertson Building?
Go move.
Second? Moved by Ms. Trigg, second by Ms. Watkins? Did I do it backwards?
Backwards.
Okay.
Yeah.
We're the same.
No. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. And again, wishing, thank you, everybody, for a wonderful school year with so many people here this year. Thank you again for all of your hard work. We appreciate it. And with that, here, no further business, we are adjourned.